To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Beth, he'll do roll call for us, please.
Frank Quiz.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Bio.
Here.
Okay. Did you take that proclamation? I don't know. All right. All right, if I could, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda, please.
So move, Your Honor.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining because of the softball articles on the consent agenda.
Okay. Councilman Faust abstaining. So we have, um...
Who made them?
Yeah, Rob made it, and Shane seconded it. Moving a little quick, my fault.
No, that's fine.
Okay, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilman Faust abstaining, motion carries.
All right, and then item six, approval of the full agenda. Again, a motion.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second. I think it was Corwin that seconded it. All vote, please.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. We do have a special presentation tonight, a proclamation for April of 2015 as Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 11th, 2015, marks the 47th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law. Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 is amended, which initiates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status... No, families. Familiar? Familial status and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the Norfolk Housing Agency and the Norfolk Housing Development Division of the City of Norfolk are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help ensure every American of their right to fair housing. Now therefore be it resolved that I sue Fuikman Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Fair Housing Month. Anyone? Okay, Beth will make sure it gets to the right person. We will...
You can combine these two.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. We will look at public hearing to amend the city's comprehensive plan north of Elm Avenue on Queen City Boulevard from single-family residential to high-density residential, and as well, the partner public hearing at the request of Jeffrey R. White for a zone change then, from R1 single-family residential to R3 north of Elm Avenue on Queen City Boulevard. I will open the public hearing and look to Trent. Are you going to give us some information, please?
Mayor and Council, this is going to be very similar to the other R3 properties that are further to the north along the old railroad property there. Jeff has been working on, on some other properties up there just north of that. So this would be very similar to that in nature, I think, two triplexes, I believe, is what you're doing, so.
Okay. Public meeting, you want to come forward, anything you want to share with us, Jeff?
My name is Jeff White. I'm a developer here in Norfolk, and we just, this was zoned and R1 tract. I don't know how it switched. It was like an Zest drill, it went to R1. We'd like it to go back to R3. We're building triplexes just, just north of this. We'd do the same thing here, just, it fits real good for a triplex rather than a single-family, I think, because the lots are real narrow, and they don't allow for a backyard, and it seems like duplexes, triplexes, more people are acceptable to those with less yard. So these just kind of fit. And then we'll be tri, we'll be multifamily from this block all the way up to Georgia Avenue.
Georgia Avenue.
So, I think it just fits pretty well. I don't know if any of you guys have any questions, what we're...
Any questions at all, Jeff? I certainly think it's addressing what we've been asking for, so I commend you for your efforts there. Council, anyone else that has any input or thoughts or...
Jeff.
Okay, thanks for being here, Jeff. Any other, anyone else, as this is a public hearing, that wants to come forward and may have questions or... Okay, I'm seeing none. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close both public hearings, and do we have a planning commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 3rd, 2015, at the request of Jeffrey R. White to amend the city's comp plan from single-family to high-density residential north of Elm Avenue and Queen, on Queen City Boulevard. The Planning Commission voted seven to zero to vote in favor of amending the comp plan to high-density residential on that area, in that area. And then, the Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 3rd to consider a public, to consider a request from Jeff White for a zoning change from R1 single-family residential to R3 multiple-family residential, to build two triplexes that are similar to those north of the parcel. Each living unit will be approximately 1,200 square feet with a basement and two-car garage. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change on a seven to zero vote.
Okay. All right, then I would ask for consideration of ordinance number 5335, which would be amending the city's comprehensive plan from single-family residential to high-density residential.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5335 on first reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion at all? Do we have something further on this too now, Beth?
Short title.
Short title, all right.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, I would please ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5335 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5335 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third reading, ordinance number 5335. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5335 carries on second and third.
All right, and then as well, consideration of ordinance number 5336, changing the zoning from R1 to R3 north of Elm Avenue on Queen City Boulevard.
Your Honor, I'll enter this ordinance 5336 on first reading.
Second.
Motion with a second. Any further discussion at all? If not, short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, ready to vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5336 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5336 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5336 on second and third. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5336 carries on second and third.
All right, and under our regular agenda, we're looking for consideration of approval to purchase a new and unused replacement ambulance from Osage Industries Incorporated for the qualifying low bid of $199,730.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration...
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. We're going to look to Scott to come forward and give us the information.
Mayor and Council, briefly, respectfully come before you tonight to ask for your consideration and approval of awarding the bid to Osage Industries. We had a very competitive bidding process this time. We had eight bids received from seven different vendors. One of those companies represents two different ambulance lines. We had total of eight bids. Seven of those, we feel substantially met the bid specifications that we submitted for, for consideration. So of those seven qualifying bids, the bid from Osage was actually low, so that, that bid was very favorable. The bids ranged from $199,000 to $238,000, and varying stages in between. So this was the lowest bid of the qualifying units. Our CIP estimate for this, based on comparable units in the area, were, was $214,000, so it came in under budget, and it gives us everything that, that the committee desired and requested. So we feel this will serve the community well for many, many years, and are pleased with this process. So would respectfully request your consideration.
That's pretty good, to have eight bids come into you. From, how far out were you, Scott, were these bids? Just out of curiosity?
One of the, one of the manufacturers actually builds the unit in New Jersey, so...
Really?
There's a, they're a local dealer, there's a dealer presence in Nebraska, but the, the factory's actually located in, in New Jersey. So we had a great, great competitive, very aggressive process this time, and we're very pleased with all these units, so they're all outstanding, so we could hardly go wrong. But when we got one that the committee felt was, was exactly what we wanted for, for that price, we really felt blessed this time. So once in a while, it just works out.
Very good.
So we're very pleased with that, so.
Any other questions at all, or Scott?
Scott, we're anticipating delivery about when, then?
They're estimating 200 days from sign of contract, so a little faster than a fire truck. It's about, about 200 days from the date we sign the contract, so I hope with your blessing tomorrow.
The unit that we have in use right, it's a replacement, so the unit that we have in use right now, or...
Yeah, the fourth unit, you know, we operate three now, primarily three, three first-response units, and then a, a kind of a reserve ambulance. That, that oldest ambulance that acts as a reserve ambulance will be the one that will be retired and taken out of service, so this one will become frontline, and those will be staggered down, and the oldest unit then will become the reserve unit. So, so that oldest unit will be the one that's actually retired. We won't keep a fifth unit, we'll maintain the four that we have, so.
Scott, what do you do with that when you take it out of service, when you retire?
Well, we would look to seek, seal bids or, or advertise it for, for anyone that would want the opportunity to have that. We have had some preliminary conversations with some small-area communities that either don't have an ambulance, or are considering some other options, or perhaps a secondary one, and we'd certainly partner with those folks to make a, a good deal for them if we could, if it would help those communities.
That's great.
So, so we're going to kind of explore all those avenues, and we'd certainly keep you informed on how we proceed with that, sir, if you like.
Thank you. Well, Scott, good job on going out and getting a lot of good quality bids on this. And is this for Station 1 or Station 2?
This ambulance will, will be housed in Station 1. Yes. That's the plan right now. And we look hard to our folks at the street department to kind of help us understand the longevity of the units, and, and the wear and tear that they're getting to try to redistribute those. So we're moving ambulances back and forth between both stations frequently, depending on the call volume and, and the wear and tear they receive. So the idea is to have two outstanding units, one at each part of the community or each, in each station, and then, you know, as those other units get along in years, it takes a little bit more tender love and care to keep them running, but they're, we feel very good about them being dependable units to back up those two primary units. So we're, we feel very blessed with what we have right now for, for equipment to serve the community with.
Very good. Any other questions at all, Council?
Chief, was this one a four-wheel drive, or not?
This is a four-wheel drive unit, yes. Yes, that, yeah, that would be something new. That's an added feature that, that we considered for a long time, but it helps with some, some of that mobility in those adverse conditions and some of the hills.
Yeah.
So we're looking forward to seeing how that works for us, and, and we'll know better going forward. Thank you, Shane, for bringing that up. That is a, it isn't something new and different for the community that we're, we're trying, so hope that works.
Very good.
Hope that works.
All right. Thanks, Scott. All right, if no further discussion then, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, next we're looking for consideration of approval to award a contract to Elkhorn Paver, paving construction of Norfolk for the concrete improvements 2015-1 project in an amount of $523,717.15.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second in front of us for consideration. We're looking to Mark to fill us in.
Yeah, this is our paving project for 2015, for this construction season. It's consistent of technically three different locations all wrapped up into one project. The first would be reconstructing Pazlock Avenue from First Street going east to just before Blaine, so basically along the north side of Aqua Venture there. That project also includes running some storm sewer from that location to Logan on the south side of Pazlock. It's pretty flat in there, so adding some inlets of storm sewer will help us with any ponding issues, you know, long-term. The second two locations are actually right next to each other. Both are Krenzine Drive. The first one is from Michigan, the 20th. This is the Farnidge Road along the southwest side of 275. That's the, by US Bank and Advance Auto there, just to kind of get your bearings. The second location is Krenzine Drive from Michigan going northwest, which is by Tractor Supply and Lingle Auto, so just get your bearings there. So basically, Michigan Avenue intersection is gonna, we're not touching that, but either side of that is getting reconstructed. We had two bids received. Elkhorn Paving was the low, and the other bid was Thorstadt Companies. They're a contractor out of South Dakota. With that, I'd recommend award of the contract Elkhorn Paving, and answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
I'll anticipate it to happen this construction season?
Yes, we have a completion date of October or November this year. I don't recall exactly, but it's this fall, completion.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay, thanks, Mark. If no further discussion, let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And next, we're going to look for consideration of resolution 2015-6, approving the McIntosh Family LLC redevelopment contract.
Your Honor, I'd offer resolution 2015-6 for consideration.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. I'm looking to, Randy, are you gonna?
Yes, Your Honor.
You're pretty briefed on this well, I'm sure, so, one more time.
This is the same redevelopment contract the agency approved a few minutes ago. This is simply the formal agreement between the redeveloper and the city, or the redeveloper and the agency, actually. The city isn't really a party to this contract, but this resolution will give the city's blessing to this contract. Implements the McIntosh Family LLC redevelopment plan, and that's been considered numerous times by the agency and the city. This provides for a maximum of $900,000 of TIF bonds, although the Phase II TIF bonds, we recognize in the contract that if there may be inflationary pressures during the intervening time, and we may need to renegotiate the maximum amount of TIF bonds at that time, depending on what happens to construction cost. I recommend approval.
Any discussion at all from this Council?
Could you please explain if the cost of construction is up, how the TIF bonds could be paid off sooner? You know, so those property taxes then can be filtered back to the, you know, school systems and city and whatnot.
I don't believe we've ever had a TIF bond issue go the full 15 years that I can recall. They normally pay off sooner, and this one, you know, housing where you've got 53 units can be a, kind of a tough one to estimate, because you don't know how quickly these housing units will get constructed. And I believe that this goes like we're envisioning, these could very easily be paid off well ahead of time. What we're planning on is a 20-year bond for each phase, and then there will be sub-phases within each phase. As the houses are constructed in, on the lots that year, say there's seven or eight houses constructed in a particular year, those seven or eight houses would be subject to a contract amendment, and that would set an effective date, and that would allow the full 15 years of taxes to go towards the bond, but in essence, you're probably only going to get 14 years, because the 15th year will not be paid until they're delinquent in most cases, which will be after the 15th year of taxes. But that's how this is envisioned to work. I expect them to pay off much quicker than that full 20-year timeframe on the two bond issues. And at that point, then, the taxes would go back to the respective taxing bodies.
Any other questions or discussion at all? Then let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2015-6 is adopted.
Okay, and final item here is consideration of awarding a contract to Western Roofing Company for the wastewater treatment plant solids handling building roof project in an amount of $53,325, and to waive the bid security requirement.
Your Honor, at this time, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
All right, I am looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Mark?
This is the roof for the solids handling building at the wastewater treatment plant. It is about 25 years old, and it had a 15-year warranty on it, so it served well past its lifetime. We're going to go back with another ballasted EPDM or a rubber roof. This bid also included the replacement of an access hatch, and we also, and the, the bid also included adding another half-inch of insulation to it. In addition to that, there's a, we estimated that about 25% of the insulation may need to be replaced, because it's either wet or damaged underneath. We really won't know until we get it opened up, so that 25% was more so to establish a, a unit price to carry through the contract. So we would adjust that at the end with a change order, just to kind of, if you see a change order come on this one in the end, that would be the reason why, maybe more, maybe less. So as stated, there's three bids received. Western Roofing was the apparent low bidder. During the review of the bids, it was, became apparent that the low bid did not have a bid security included. Had a subcommittee meeting where a subcommittee recommended to waive the bid security requirement, and proceeded with the low bidder. I believe the other two were actually even above our budgeted number. So planning on going forward, and going forward, we are requiring, we did change some verbiage in our specifications, so we don't run into this issue again with the, the bid security, so it's clear, we're going to require it to be submitted in a separate envelope. That way, it's, it's clear and, and open that there is a bid security there. If there isn't, we'll probably reject those bids going forward. That's kind of become the standard practice in a lot of, a lot of municipalities, a lot of contracts. So with that, I'd answer any questions, I'd recommend the low bid.
Any questions at all, Mark?
Time frame?
Uh, time frame on this one is this year. I don't, I want to say we had a, like a September completion date, I don't know if you can quote me on that, but there's someone in this room that probably have a good idea on completing it, but I think, I want to say it was September, but I don't know that 100% for sure. There's, there's not, it's not a roof where it's a sieve every time it rains, so we do have some time to complete it.
Well, if it means that it's going to rain, let's leave it as it is for a while, so. Any other questions or comments at all? All right, then are we ready to vote? Please do.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilman Muren abstaining, motion carries.
Okay. All right, and we have with us tonight our librarian, whom we're going to ask to come forward and speak, if she would, for just a moment, and kind of bring us up to date on the project and what's happening. I think there's a councilman or two that might have a question for you, so.
Sure.
We'll give you a couple minutes here.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to take this opportunity to thank the community of Norfolk for their support of the library and the upcoming renovation and expansion, and just kind of give you an update about where we are in that project. In February, we issued requests for qualifications for architectural and engineering firms, and we got those, or those qualifications back, and we'll be doing interviews next week with, with three of the firms, and following that, we'll make a selection on who we're going to be working with for the architecture and engineering part of it, and we'll be negotiating a contract and then going forward from there. So we're excited to get this project moving forward. So, any questions?
Jessica, I have a question for you, because this is being financed by the taxpayers and through a sales, I believe a half-cent sales tax, and you or Randy or whomever, when does that kick in? And I, I know the ballot language said 36 months, but 36 months from next Christmas? Or when?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll be glad to answer that. That's coming into effect here 1st of April, so this is a good time, I think, to remind the merchants that they need to be gearing up to collect that extra half-cent sales tax.
That's appreciated.
We've had one call already from a merchant talking about what he needed to do to get that adjustment into place, and hopefully all of the merchants are aware of this, and will be adjusting their cash registers and point-of-sale devices to take this into account to go into effect on April 1. It might even be a good time for the newspaper, to radio stations, to remind the retailers out there that they need to be aware of this and, and plan on implementing it on April 1, which is just a couple weeks away.
Mayor?
Sure.
Randy, the Department of Revenue doesn't send anything out to the individual sales tax collectors, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you sending anything out?
I've, we're planning on sending out information to the occupation tax database that we have. We've got emails for those. We don't have emails for most of the other retailers. I have talked to the Chamber of Commerce about sending out an email to their members, and I believe they're going to be discussing this tomorrow in one of their meetings, and I hope they will do something in that regard.
Any other questions for Jessica? All right. Appreciate having you here. All right, this is the evening for a public comment period, so is there anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak to, address this body in front of you? I remind you that there's actually no action that can be taken by this body, but we're certainly here to hear any comments or concerns. So with that, anyone wants to come forward? We'll ask you to state your name and sign in, of course.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Paul Medelman. Well, yeah, thank you. I don't have any special order or anything I'm going through here, but I do have some facts and figures and opinions. I'm trying to give some transparency and ask some questions of the elected officials. Back in January, I was somewhat frustrated that our taxes were raised for the hangars at the, out at the airport authority, or the airport, and also that those hangars are being rented for well below what I would consider market, market rates. For example, the, um, here as I can tell, this was, this was put out and distributed, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have made copies, I guess, but this was put out by the Norfolk Airport Authority, and it appears that Norfolk rents airplane hangars, tea hangars at six cents a square foot, seven cents a square foot, 10 cents a square foot per month. I mean, you can't rent many storage for that, and I guess I just feel that the citizens subsidizing that is, to that extent, is just, is a far, is a reach, I think, to ask the citizens to do that, and, you know, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus here, but they, and this is public record, they did publish the, some names, and I'm going to read a couple, some of those names that are listed here, that rent hangars out there and being subsidized by the citizens of Norfolk. They are Elkhorn Aviation, Meyer Farms, Lenz Chiropractic, Gary Brun... They are Alcorn Aviation, Meyer Farms, Lenz Chiropractic, Gary Brunns, Dr. Robert Adams, Barth Farms, Mark Trainer, BVBJ Aviation, KB Investments, EBM Construction, Discovering Possibilities, Beckenhauer Construction, Connecting Point, Funk Farms, Sunderman Feedlots, Dr. Mark Davis, Dr. David Schroeder, Great Plains Hybrids, Calm Water Financial, 340 Aviation, Premier Marketing, Norfolk Iron Metal, Dinklage, Wisco, First Winds LLC, Dale's Flying Service, AmeriFlight, Faith Regional, MPPD hires, now that's just saying, somebody, they hire power line patrols to come in, and I assume they rent some hangar space at various times. But those are the people that were listed on this report, being subsidized by the taxpayers of Norfolk when you raised our taxes. Now, when I was looking at this, and I was looking over through the budgets and stuff here, and I, I just couldn't help but see or not see that there was no rental income coming in from Barnstormers. So consequently, I started researching that a little bit. And I did come up, finally got the lease that the Barnstormers rent, or the Barnstormers After the reading the lease, I was taken back a bit by the lenient terms. Zero rent for 10 years, zero. I would like to lay out a few facts, if you would bear with me, just to, I'm going to skim through this lease a little bit. The initial term is based on, the initial term is based on a formula that was given in paragraph one, article C, that the exact cost of the remodeling would be divided by $8,400. And this page here, I believe, was submitted with that original lease back in 10, that says $103,000. In that $103,000, there's roof repairs of $19,000, plumbing water lines and wall repairs of $11,000, windows, because they meet a national historical value, value there, I believe, $24,200, check septic and sewer system, $3,000, flooring, $9,000, tile, $7,000, ceiling, $4,500, paint the building, $5,800, install handicap bathrooms and other ADA requirements at $4,500, electrical preparation and electrical work at $15,000, and that adds up to $103,000. Now, that number, from what I read in the lease, which, and this was given to me when I asked for the lease, is to be divided by 8,400, which comes out to 12 and a half years free rent. They had since negotiated, and I don't know why they've, this has happened, but two years later, there's a lease, amendment to the lease that lowers that dollar amount to $66,126 for construction costs, which is nowhere near the $103,000 for construction costs. And they have $7,000 on their lease, and this is all public record here, $7,000, they paid for a performance bond. I usually pay about 3/4 of a percent, so that'd be like 600 bucks that you probably should pay for a bond. So I don't know whether they're getting the figures, but they paid 7,000 or have listed $7,000 that they paid for a bond expense, and electrical work performed by Nebraska Public Power District in the amount of $2,100 to replace a CT cabinet on the 75 KV pad mount transformer at Barnstormers Restaurant. Furthermore, there was a 15% builder's management fee taken into consideration for which Barnstormers was responsible. So I would guess I'd ask who received that 15%, and it seems a little under the circumstances here, a little high. The last paragraph here is, by way of further agreement and amendment, Barnstormers will be credited with previously charged $2,100 of the electric work for MPPD to replace the cabinet metering on the 75 KV pad mount transformer at Barnstormers Restaurant in exchange for Barnstormers painting the exterior of the restaurant and fixing the flat windows. Then I go back to this, and it says in the original agreement that they are fixing the windows for $24,200. And they're painting the building for $5,800. So I haven't, it's confusing here, and the only thing I can determine is that this agreement was made in, 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 two, two years later, so that by lease, get to that in the lease here, by the lease, they've established what they did here. So in the lease, the airport is responsible for any repairs over $500. So I assume they've identified these. I would like to have a list of the $66,000. So I assume they've done that to identify their costs, and at this point now, the airport is responsible, as they were from the beginning, for any, any expense over $500, the airport or the citizens of Norfolk pays for. So my guess is that a lot of these items here were not done. I take issue with one here too also, the roof repairs of $19,000. $19,000 went on a, February 10th, an article in the paper where Dave Faust from Barnstormers addressed all the leaks in the building, and that he was going to bill the Norfolk city and the Norfolk Airport Authority for those leaks, and that those, the damage from those leaks would far offset the $13,000 that he owed for electricity. It appears to me the roof, and the lease also says that they were supposed to fix the roof. It wasn't a patch job. They were supposed to fix the roof and pay for that at the very beginning. It's just amazing to me that they, well, let me read this. We'll give the, this is from the paper. "We'll give the Airport Authority bill for the damage, which is going to offset the electric bill by far," Faust said. "And we'll talk to them about the sewer system," which I'll get into in a little bit here, "which they'll probably owe us money on, and we'll see where we end up." So it seems to be a little bit of arrogance coming from Mr. Faust on this lease that he has negotiated on behalf of Barnstormers out there.
Please understand, Paul, you're probably sharing a lot of information that I don't know we as elected officials are aware of. I just remind you, it is that board that would be signing, I assume, the, the amendment.
Yeah. The reason I bring it to the attention of the city council is because the city council approves the budget for the Norfolk Airport Authority. The city owns the airport, and the city also raises and sets the mill levy for the airport. So I think you're directly involved and responsible, whether it's directly or indirectly, but they are elected officials.
Yes.
But I think there's a lot of responsibility that falls on this board here to make sure that that operates out there and functions well, and...
And, you know, like I say, I'm not disagreeing with you in your statement there. However, don't take us too far in the weeds, because I think it's a lot of information to try to, I mean...
There is a lot of information.
Yeah.
And I'm not done, so...
Okay. That's fine.
I could proceed.
Yes.
All right. I was going through the lease. I'd like to point out that through this lease amendment dated 8th of April 2013, two years after this lease was signed, it was renegotiated to 10 years. So after the 10 years of free rent, zero, all they have to pay is the electricity bill, which apparently they can't seem to pay, and/or taxes. They have not paid their property taxes, because they also have in here a notice from the county that the, that they are being, the tax certificates have been sold as of today for the airport. I assume it's the whole airport, because it listed out at 458 acres. So they've put the city at risk by not paying their property taxes out here at the Barnstormers. Continuing here, the lease, for the first 10 years is free rent, the second, they are allowed four, five year options to extend this lease, which takes it out at 30 years. 30 years, the first five years of that option to extend is for the sum of $630. The second five year option is for $770. The third option is for $810, and for the 30th year, $990. And I would tell the body here that I have leased buildings to restaurants, and that that is far, far, far below the value that that building should receive for rent. I would, I would project that that building should probably be bringing in anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 per month, if it was actually assessed and evaluated. I received $3,500 for a smaller space than that, so, on a restaurant. So they have, by, the, bear with me if you would please here, I have a... The utilities, as set out in the lease here, are supposed to be provided by the Leacy's, supposed to pay for those at his sole expense, provide and pay for all the utilities for the premises, including, but not limited to, electricity, gas, et cetera. Leacy, at Leacy's expense, shall be responsible for the day to day ordinary maintenance. And I'm just going to read some article, or piece, or paragraphs that I think have some, would be of interest to some of the citizens. Leacy's improvements and repairs, this is what they agreed to do prior to starting their repairs. Leacy's improvement, commencing on the effective date, Leacy, at Leacy's expense, shall make substantial improvements, substantial improvements and modifications to the premises for the benefit of the less or in order to put the old tenant terminal building in such a condition to be able to operate as a restaurant. That's pretty key, I think, to operate as a restaurant. These repairs and improvements include, but are not limited to, repair the roof in a sufficient manner to stop leaks and function as a roof for the premises, which goes to the article in the paper where they're asking for, to me, asking for, to be paid back for damages. To make such plumbing repairs to the existing interior plumbing, for Leacy's purposes, including installation of bathrooms, new bathroom fixtures, moving the west bathroom wall, with all repairs and improvements to be in accordance with ADA requirements and all other government regulations. In addition, Leacy shall add floor drains in the kitchen areas, install mop sinks and other kitchens, kitchen sinks with dishwasher, washers. There was some talk about walls. Repair and improve all exterior windows. And they submitted a document here, it said that $24,200. I don't think they did that. Repair and improve all exterior windows in accordance with the requirements of the Nebraska Historical Society. I'd like to have a copy of the Historical Society and their, that they complied with that. Repair and/or replace floors, tiles, carpeting, et cetera. Repair all the damaged ceilings, add electrical conduit and panels, repair, replace, add outlets, switches, old ceilings, conduit, old conduit to be removed, change electrical wiring and panels, and add light fixtures, ceiling fans, repair existing air conditioning, heating, and other places, same wood, same good working conditions. So they had to change the electrical panels, and at that time, they should have known what was all hooked up to that, because now, all of a sudden, they're trying to say they're not paying their electrical bill, because they didn't know what was hooked up to that. But yet, they were required in here to change the panels and rehook everything up. So it's, seems to me that there's a bit of honesty lacking here, what they actually did, and, and that's one reason why tonight, I would like to formally request that the Airport Authority, through the city council, request a full accounting of the construction costs, the lease, any documents that are associated with the lease that should have been provided, national, you know, the historical records, just any and all accounting that is associated with this lease, since they aren't paying. They, improve the, repair and approve the septic sewer system in accord, meet the needs of the proposed restaurant for the premises and be in good working condition. Repair and improve the septic sewer system in order to meet the needs of the proposed restaurant. Four to five months after they opened up, the septic system was overwhelmed, couldn't handle it. So apparently, they didn't address this problem, and now are throwing it onto the airport to be reimbursed for the $30,000 they spent, Barnstormers spent on the septic system, yet they didn't do anything in the beginning that I, without any accounting, I have no idea what they did, and you have no idea what they did. But from reading this, they should have repaired and replaced and put the septic sewer system into a working condition for a restaurant. They were required to comply promptly with all applicable statutes, ordinance, laws, regulations, zoning, et cetera, which would have brought their septic tank up to a standard that would have been acceptable for a restaurant, because you have to apply for a permit in the DEQ or EPA. The city would direct you in that respect. Provide regular minor maintenance. When they say minor, they say minor, because the airport is responsible for major repairs. They're responsible for anything under $500. And again, that's why I go back to this. I think this was established to set a basis two years later, so they wouldn't have to spend more than $500. Minor maintenance for the septic sewer system for the premises as required, including having the septic system on a regular basis and a timely basis. It's my understanding on the septic system that they were, three, four months, whenever it started being overwhelmed, that the Terry Walker out there asked and asked, and it was overflowing, it stunk, people were complaining, so she called Mr. Kube, I believe, and he wrote a letter informing them to get it cleaned up, changed, or something. They ended up putting in a $30,000 system, I understand, that probably should have been addressed before they moved in, since there's no city utilities out there. Now, it, the, the lessor's maintenance, the lessor is required, airport, the city, all major maintenance required on the water well, all major maintenance for the potable waters, their responsibility, perform all major repairs and maintenance, concrete repair, asphalt repair, access roads, the east parking lot, south parking lot. This is all the lessor has to do this, including striping, painting, parking lots. The lessor has to provide all the snow removal, provide all the lawn service, including mowing as required for the premises in a timely manner. Repair the premises and buildings in such a manner as, repair the premises and the building in which the premises is a part as required due to the lessor's negligence. I'm getting off the subject there. Lessor's responsibility for major repairs, and here's where it tells you the dollars amount, dollar amounts. Lessor's responsibility for major repairs and maintenance, as set forth herein, shall be defined as any repair or expense that exceeds $500 be defined as any repair or expense that exceeds $500. And that's again, why I think this was assigned in, two years after the deal, to get it, some facts down and what they're responsible for. So now, the $500 is paid to the, or by the, by the lessor. Leesee's improvements, prior to commencement of any work, Leesee shall pay the amount of any increase in premiums on insurance policies. I assume they've done that. However, back here, the, the lessor has to also provide all the insurance on the building. And keep in mind, they're paying zero rent. Lessor, at, lessor's expense, obtain and keep enforced during the term of this lease a policy or policies, insurance covering the loss or damage to the building. And that's not reimbursable cost, as far as I know, it's just paid by the lessor. Tonight, I'm going to ask the airport authority through the city's council here to proceed with paragraph 18, which is a default by Leesee. It's my understanding that they have not issued a letter to Barnstormers that they are in fact in default or breach of their contract. When this electric bill's been ongoing for, I asked what the monthly bill was and they wouldn't tell me or didn't tell me at the last meeting I was at. I know they owe $13,000. And if you go through, they are, in the lease also provides that they have to pay interest at the maximum allowable rate, which is 16%. If they're two years behind, they currently owe $16,286. They're one year behind, they owe $15,080 with interest included. And I don't think the citizens of Norfolk should expect anything less than to get the interest on their money. And it's allowed at 16% as per law. And I think Clint would maybe, if I'm wrong on that interest rate, would let me know, but... So I would ask that the airport authority issue, that they are in default of their lease, which gives them 10 days to, per the lease here, it gives them 10 days to, to get current, pay their electric bill. And if they don't, if they don't pay their bills in 10 days, then they are in default. They aren't in default until, I think, they give them notice that they're in default and quit trying to work out a deal with, you know, they got them paying $150 a month, it doesn't even pay the interest on the past due balance of, if you charge the 16%, it'd be $173. They're not, they're not even paying the interest on their, their past due amount. Anyway, they should, they should issue a, a breach of contract. And then there's also in, the next paragraph, 19, in the event of the default, it states what you have to do, and I'm sure Clint will show everybody that, but it does provide in there, all costs expenditures so incurred by lessor shall be deemed added to rent and shall constitute additional rent. The same shall bear interest from the date incurred by lessor to the date paid by Leesee, the highest lawful rate under the laws of the state of Nebraska. Lessor may invoke any remedy with, lessor has or may have at law or in equity as provided under the laws of the state of Nebraska. They are behind in their real estate taxes, as I mentioned. Whenever a public body leases a piece of property, it's my understanding, to a private business, they have to submit those leases to the county so that that property is put back on the tax rolls. This here is a notice sent March 3rd that they are behind in their taxes for this piece of property, it doesn't identify it, other than it does provide pictures of Barnstormers and a floor plan. I assume that's what it's for. It listed out as 485 acres, so that's what the original Carl Stefan Airport was, I assume. So I think it's put the city at risk. You have a lien against your property and today, those, that property, if taxes haven't been paid, those tax certificates were sold today, so somebody else owns your tax certificates besides the county today, if they haven't been paid. So I think it puts the citizens and this board at a severe, it's not right, just ain't right. Something stinks out there at the airport. So here's a copy of that, this is all public record. That's pretty much the lease. They were required also to obtain approval of the Nebraska Historical Society to do whatever they did out there. I would like to have a record of that or see that, request that from the Nebraska Historical Society. And this is the signatory page of Dave Faust and Dan Gary signing it and then subsequently Then attached to that lease was the estimates of the $103,000. I would like to see an exact accounting of this. It was an estimate, but those estimates were arrived from somewhere. I would like to have an accounting of those for the taxpayers, not necessarily me. The taxpayers deserve an accounting of that. And then the subsequent agreement that, signed two years later, and why the big difference. Then as part of that lease that I was provided, there's a floor plan of the building, a sketch of the airport, and that would be the extent of the lease. My talking points here, I had, the next one, when I have already talked about it out of order, my order anyway, but it was about the septic system and that that was supposed to have been done before they moved in and brought up to a standard to, to receive and accept a restaurant business. And it failed months after they opened up, so I don't know what they did to bring that up to standards. The same with the roof, fix the roof, and as he was quoted for, as he was quoted in here, that, you know, you're gonna owe us a lot more money than we owe you, which seems, well, it's not good. As far as the past due amounts, that's my understanding, and I, Clint kinda maybe cleared up a little bit, a little bit of that the other day, but I, not being a lawyer, didn't quite understand everything he was saying. But I do not believe that a political subdivision, airport or city, can extend credit to a private business, that credit being their electric bill, their taxes that aren't paid for their arrears and their rents or electric. I also question if you can extend the free rent to any private business, let alone Barnstormers, just free rent to anybody. I just don't believe that's legal, I think every political subdivision has to collect And again, I would ask the city to submit a formal request to or from the airport for a full investigation by the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission as to what's going on out here, and a full accounting of all the expenditures that were allocated to the 10 years of free rent. Also, I will ask the city and the airport authority, per lease agreement, signed on the 8th of December 2010 by Dave Faust, as president of Barnstormers, and as, and I've addressed this earlier, as per paragraph 18, that they are in default on their lease and that they have 10 days to cure said default. If Barnstormers fails to remedy this in 10 days, per paragraph 19, the airport may cancel and terminate this lease, which I believe they should do. At minimum, at minimum, they should be put on record as being in default, and they have not been put on record of being in default on their lease. Now, another, and this goes maybe to a little...
I don't wanna, I get what you're saying, but I think it's necessary to give us the opportunity to work through that lease ourselves. And certainly, you're bringing to light that we as elected officials need to take some responsibility on this. So, again...
I'm pretty much done with the lease now, I'm moving on to something else.
Okay. I'd appreciate that, because I gotta tell you, you're doing a lot of Leesee and lessors and I'm not quite sure I'm understanding it all, I'm ready to sit down and read it.
I think Clint does.
I'm sure he does, I'm sure he does. And I know, like I say, you've made some requests of us, I want you to know as well that you certainly have the right to ask for any of these documents in writing, they are public. So you have that...
Everything I have in front of me is a public record.
Yeah, okay, very good.
If I could continue. In September, and this goes to the vote for the taxes and also the budget, in September or October, I'm not sure of the dates, Mr. Faust voted to approve a budget for the airport that had been and currently is paying the restaurant's electric bill. Then in January, Mr. Faust votes to raise our taxes because they are short of funds to build the hangars. Keep in mind, the money to pay the electric bill comes from the same account that the taxes need to go into. I believe if that is not a conflict at minimum, it's ethically and morally not right to, and that should've, he should've abstained from voting on that, but I believe it to be a conflict and it should've been addressed as such, being behind in the taxes, being behind in the electric bill.
Paul, your, your information on the taxes is false. So I just wanna tell you that, that you're, you're wrong on that, you're not up to date on a lot of the other things, so...
Okay. I just got that, you know, a few days ago. So anyway...
Well, your few days are up and you're wrong. And the other things I've discussed with council and I don't have a conflict, so I'm not gonna argue with you, but your, your information's wrong, so...
Be good. Well, this, this just came out March 3rd, so that's pretty recent to me, the default taxes, so. March 3rd, what's the day?
16th, you're two weeks off.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, this goes back two years, Dave, so, tack, these are 12, 2013 taxes, so at any rate, I'm not gonna... If, just a note, if, if Barnstormers elects not to pay, as there's no personal guarantee on this lease, there's no one to go after to collect this, it's a, it's a, it's a LLC, I assume, or limited partnership. If they file bankruptcy, the way I understand the law, all investors would be required to divulge the information that they filed bankruptcy on all their personal loans, personal mortgages, personal financial reports, et cetera, under penalty of law. I imagine that might affect some credit scores of the investors out there. It's also come to my attention, that's the taxes. You know, if there's 100 members in this organization, it might be pretty easy just to go out and ask them for 50 bucks, 100 bucks, pay the electric bill, let's get up and move on. Now, I did come forward this evening with some reservations, you might not think so, but I did. As I, companies I own or affiliated with, contract with the city, just, for example, tonight, we were just awarded a contract for half a million dollars. So I come with some reservation, saying some of the things I'm saying, that it's all public record, but, but we do contract with the city on an, on, on, on almost annual basis at times, over a million dollars. So I hope that this concern that I have is addressed in a professional manner and with some urgency and with no repercussions to me or the companies I represent. And lastly, I am, about there. Lastly, in, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cite three examples for you, which I think sets an MO for someone. In December 4th of '07, I attended a meeting in Mr. Faust's office at his convenience store with Mike Smith, the developer from Pedcor. And at that meeting, the, the stuff that was said, I thought was so out of line, that I literally went back to my office, and that's why I have this dated 12/4/07. And it tells what Dave said to me at that meeting, and I'd like to say that here tonight to everyone. It was in regards, myself and Mike Smith were in that office, the night after, the morning after the vote that we received from this board of a no vote for our apartment project, the $8 million project that Mr. Smith wanted to bring to town. We received that no vote, so in an effort to try and salvage the project, see if we could come to a different conclusion possibly at another meeting, bring it forward again, Mike Smith, with my recommendation to do this, said, yeah, he would meet with Dave, because at the time, it seemed like Dave was kinda instigating or controlling a lot of the, the message that was out there. And some quotes he put in the paper the following day were absolutely wrong, but at that meeting, we had another plot or plat of land that we had brought in to show Dave, you know, would this piece work, maybe would you, would the council support this? And so, within about a minute, we had that piece of, that drawing laid out, and through that, the beginning of the meeting, I said, I'd mentioned Mike Nolan's name, who was the city administrator at that time. And Dave proceeded to say, if you want my support, do not get Mike Nolan involved any And I said to Dave, I said, well, Dave, he is the administrator and would have to be involved in some form. And I indicated, I said, what was all the discussion about Mike for at the meeting that night? And he's, Dave proceeded to do this to my drawing, threw it back at the table and said, if you want to argue about Mike Nolan, then here is your plan, don't talk to me because I won't support it. Dave said, I'm going to get that, he swore, S sucker fired, he has... He has screwed me so many times. Now, all this was said in front of Mike Smith, a developer from out of state coming to Norfolk to spend $8 million. At that point, I held my hands up, and I said, Dave, I said, I'm gonna leave the meeting. It'd been about three minutes. I said, I'm gonna leave the meeting. I said, Mike, if you wish to stay, you can. And he did for another minute or two. But he came out, and he just kinda was shaking his head, and I said, Mike, I apologize for what Dave had said in that meeting, and I apologize for the city. I said, you didn't deserve that. And he said, well, it's just small-town politics. I said, yeah, I guess, but it's still embarrassing. I tried to get him back, but he wouldn't come back, so we did try to zone again, but unsuccessfully. Now, last Monday, at the airport authority meeting, after the meeting, I left, and Dave proceeded to verbally attack me, swear at me, cuss me out, intimidated me, threatened He said, I'm going to expose you for the A-hole you are, which I don't know what that means, but Dave's going to expose me, so good luck, Dave. I was just taken aback by the abuse that this man put upon me and other people. I can take it, I'm a big boy, doesn't bother me. I've been in construction for a long time, I've heard every word there is out there, but I don't, I do not, I do not, do not have to take it from this man right here. I do not. An elected official, I deserve more respect than that. Third instance, the day after, Tuesday, I went into the airport authority's office, and I was gathering some information from... Terry Walker was kind enough to give me some stuff, it's public record, and their books, or not their books, but that she was willing to give me, that was common knowledge, so to speak. And I, we were just talking, you know, we talked for a half an hour probably, and not best friends or anything, but got to kinda, you know, just kinda shooting the breeze a little bit. And I had mentioned that this little encounter that I had with Dave, and she says, well, you know what? Back in 2011, which is when the septic tanks were overflowing, Dave, if you remember, and they wouldn't fix them, Terry Walker sent a letter, or asked the city to come out and do something. Well, after that letter was received by the Barnstormers, Mr. Faust proceeded to come over in Terry Walker's office, and proceeded to throw obscenities out at her, proceeded to demean her, malign her, whatever other synonym you'd like to put on top of that, that'd be fine, because he probably did it. But most importantly, he threatened her. He said, I am going to get you fired. Mr. Faust said to Terry, I am going to get you fired.
I don't think that's true.
She'll sign an affidavit, Dave.
That's fine, but it's not true.
Okay. Any of this true?
Not much of it.
Okay, I didn't think so.
No.
Okay, well, let me tell you, let me show you this then, because this is also true, or maybe not true according to Dave, but only in Dave's mind is it not true. Until Monday night, I wasn't doing some of this stuff, but Dave took it to another level when he attacked me, verbally attacked me, abused me, tried to malign me, threatened me. So, I think Dave is being less than genuine and honest with his constituents. I have in my hand a deed of trust, I have in my hand a quick claim deed in lieu of foreclosure, that Dave's house was foreclosed on him, his store was foreclosed on him. And I also have in my possession a federal tax lien for the years 2011, 12, and 13, and I assume soon to be 14, for Dave Faust in the amount of $64,451. It appears to me that Dave has a hard time paying his bills, and that's reflected now into the Barnstormers. They're not paying their electric bill, they're not paying their taxes, he's not paying his personal taxes, he's not taking responsibility for that, and he's not taking any responsibility for a lot of the things he's said. So, Dave, if you'd like me to quote the book and page number those are on, I sure can do that for you. And you can check it out, see if they're true or not.
Those are not true. They're not for my personal taxes, that tax lien is on Barnstormers.
Okay.
As a corporation.
Well, I have the book and page numbers here, if anybody would like to see them. With that, I have one more thing that I would like to say, and there's a lot more. Trust me, there's more. There is not only an odor coming from that septic tank out there, but there's an odor coming from the whole facility. This whole deal stinks. Stinks to high heaven. Apologize here, give me a minute. There it is. I'll just conclude with... Dave appears to see some humor in this, which is good, because he's gonna need some humor, I think, down the road. I would like to proceed at this meeting to formally ask, in lieu of the facts that I've put forth, that Mr. Faust resign and step down from the city council. Any questions?
Certainly, I think you've been heard. I do believe Clint would like to maybe make some clarification for us on...
Couple comments? Just the facts.
I just had seven items I wanted to address.
It's just the facts.
Of course. Many of these comments have caused me to look at all sorts of things here. First of all, in the name of disclosure, I'm privileged to serve as the city attorney. The Nebraska statutes allow that. In that capacity, I can also serve as the attorney for the airport authority. I was assigned to do that four or five years ago, and I've been out there in that capacity since that time. So, that's expressly provided for by statute. With that said, the lease that's been referred to tonight, the lease amendment or addendum or whatever, I didn't have anything to do with any of those things. When the restaurant came to the airport authority, I said I wasn't gonna be involved in that. It created a quandary of sorts with elected officials on this council, and so I haven't done that, okay? I want to respond, so that's already two of the things, okay?
Good work.
The third thing I had, the third thing I wanted to do is just say that I think it's important that we understand the relationship between this council and the Norfolk Airport Authority. The Norfolk Airport Authority is a separate body politic. It's a body which, prior to about 1997 or 1998, had its own levy authority. They didn't do what they do now. It was handled differently. They could just go out and set their taxes. Now, as you're aware, there's a process that goes on about budget time, where they come and they ask the city council to grant them levy authority, just like Randy, the Fire District does with the county, some other things do with the county. But there's, that's the new, that's the new normal for about the last 17 years or so. So, that's really what the authority has, that the authority, that this city council, this group of elected officials has over the airport authority. We, you talked about the, you talked about the lease, or the hangars. That was basically a budgetary thing, where the airport authority was not issuing bonds for this hangar that's gonna be built. Had they issued bonds in the past, bond council has said that because of the, what I will refer to as the mother may I asking for tax authority from this body, the council has to give to the airport authority an indication that says, in the years ahead, for the 20-year terms of the bonds or whatever, we will give you at least enough budget, at least enough levy authority, at least enough taxes, so that you can pay the bonds. In a similar way, the airport hangars are being constructed with a 10-year interest-free loan from the state, and with a federal grant that has a 10% match of local money. That local money is being borrowed, and the resolution that was ultimately approved by this council said that the, that this council would, in the years ahead, grant enough levy authority so that that debt could be serviced by the airport authority. So, that's what that was. When we talked about the, when Mr. Mendelman talked about the hangar and whatever, and the conflict of interest, you know, there's some interesting things out at the airport, some interesting scenarios, for as long as I've been involved with this, in that there are five airport authority members out there. Three of them are investors in the Barnstormers Restaurant. They have a conflict of interest. The Nebraska law is kind of interesting, in that if a quorum of the members of the airport authority have a conflict, they just have to declare the conflict, and then they can all vote. In the discussion of making sure that I had that right, I did talk with Frank Daly, who's the executive director of the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission. In the process of talking to Mr. Daly about, to make sure that I was advising the airport authority board properly, I also talked about, with him, about Councilman Faust's vote on the hangars here, as a member of this body. And it was my conclusion, as I watched Dave vote on that, that he did not have a conflict of interest. I've subsequently confirmed, after giving all of the facts to Mr. Frank Daly at the Accountability and Disclosure Commission, that he concurs with that. Now, when we talk about that, you know, and notwithstanding that, Mr. Mendelman, you can view all of that and come to your own conclusion about whether it's a conflict of interest or whether you think it's appropriate. But under the Accountability and Disclosures Commission rules, I'm absolutely convinced that Councilman Faust did not have a conflict of interest when he voted on the airport hangars there. Moving on, Mr. Mendelman, you talked about some public records during the course of this, and I didn't write them all down, that you wanted from this body. As I go through there, I can tell you, I don't think that this body has those records.
I don't believe so. I was asking that this body ask the airport authority for those records.
Well, and one of the things I might encourage you to do is to make that request in writing to the airport authority, and so that it's something that doesn't get lost in the translation, if you will. I think that's the appropriate way, appropriate way to do that. I did want to talk just briefly about something that I know that you're all interested in, which is the real estate taxes. I looked up on Nebraska Taxes Online, the real estate taxes that Dave said were not delinquent, and that you, Paul, said were, were paid. Those are the 2013 taxes, which are, were, we pay late in 2000, we pay in 2014. Those taxes were paid on March 13th of 2015. They are paid now, and just as we...
Who paid them?
Doesn't say. I have no idea. It just shows paid 3/13/2015.
Did Barnstormers pay them?
Is that when the bond, they...
Yeah.
What?
I don't, I don't, I don't...
I don't know how this looks.
I don't know if, there is nothing here that indicates the tax sale on here. Usually, and usually there's something in...
Oh, they sell a tax certificate.
They'd sell a tax certificate, and usually it shows up on Taxes Online and read as tax sale, okay? Now, there's something that's a little bit different here, because, this is a little bit different, and because the property taxes that are issued, if we, if a property owner doesn't pay property taxes, that normally would constitute a lien on the real property. In this instance, and there's about seven or eight things that go on, and this is something that I brought up to the airport authority, so that they didn't have an issue with the real estate taxes from, in regard to the tenant Barnstormers, for instance. There's about six things that happened. One, before January 31st of each year, city, county, airport authority provides to the assessor leases that they have. That's the first thing that happens. Second thing, before March, and the only reason I know this is because this is reading from an email that I sent to the airport. I don't know this off the top of my head. Sorry. The second thing that happens is that before March 1st, the assessor says, hey, I've looked at this lease, this is or this is not being used for a public purpose. For instance, running a restaurant is not being used for a public purpose, so the airport is, or so the assessor says, as a result, it's gonna be taxed. That notice then is sent to the property owner. Now, we get to another really screwy thing, because the airport authority is in sole control of the property out there, but as I think you know, the city owns it. So, when they send that, that comes to Bath, I believe, at the city. Bath sends it to the airport authority, because they're in control of it, and the airport authority sends it on to the tenant Barnstormers and says, they're telling you that you are public, you're not a public use, you're gonna have to pay taxes. The fourth thing then is, the leaseholder can make a protest regarding the assessment of taxes if they want to. And then, five, when the taxes come due, when the bills come out, that's sent to the governmental owner, to the city, and then the city sends it on to the airport authority, who sends it on to the leaseholder, to the tenant, okay? And then what happens is those taxes are there. The key to this is, and I'm gonna give you, I know this is dry, and I know you're all taking notes of this, but 77-202.11/3, that's 77-202.11/3, provides that no lien attaches to the public property if real estate taxes are not paid. Rather, the real estate taxes that, even though we've called them real estate taxes, that are to be paid by the tenant, attach as a first lien on any personal property that the tenant owns. So, I won't go any farther there, because I see everybody's eyes rolling back and glassing up, but it's, that's what happens with that. So, I don't think that regardless of whether Barnstormers pays the real estate taxes, which I think, or the taxes, which I think has been done now, or whether they don't, the real estate that the airport authority controls, that's owned by the city, is not in jeopardy, and there are no liens on it. It's much like the reason we buy bonds. When the roof is done, when Thad was talking about the conflict earlier tonight, when the roof is done on the building out at the, at wastewater, there can be no lien attached to that like there can be if I don't pay for the roof that's going on my private building or my private house. So, that's why they post a bond. There's a bond required to protect the materialmen and the labors. So, with that said, I'll just be quiet. I did want to address those...
Since you're full of opinions, how about this one?
Okay.
Does a political subdivision, can they extend credit to a private business for the arrears in an electric bill that was supposed to be paid through a lease agreement, and they're behind a year, two years?
This is deja vu all over again.
I know you talked a little bit about it at the airport...
You asked that same question at the airport authority. There is a provision...
For the benefit of this board, would you...
There is a provision in the, I don't have that stuff with me, I had the other day, but there is a provision, Randy may be able to help me, there is a provision in the Nebraska Constitution, I think it is Title 13, Section 3.
I can't remember that. I can't remember that.
But what it says, is it says that "The credit of the state shall not be extended for any person, corporation, or otherwise." That thing can, has come along in a couple of different things, and I've read the cases since I've heard this discussion going on at the Airport Authority and otherwise. But where we've seen those, that was one of the things, for those of you that are old enough to remember Commonwealth in, in, in Lincoln? What? When, when Commonwealth failed, there was a bill in the legislature that appropriated $30 million to pay the lost shareholders of, of Commonwealth. That was determined by the Nebraska Supreme Court to be an unlawful expenditure of the credit of the state because of the way that the, the, the bill was passed. There's been other things like that, where it said, "We're going to do ethanol in the state," back in about 1980, and, and the ethanol case said that, that, that in the name of economic development, if somebody goes out there and they, the, the, the political subdivision will guarantee the bonds. And then if the business doesn't go forward, the public will pay those bonds. Declared unconstitutional because of the credit of the, of the state. The, so, so I don't think that there is a constitutional prohibition against the credit of the state.
You're talking about states, not cities, political subdivisions.
When it says state, and there's a case that says this too, when it stays state, it means any political subdivision, which includes Airport Authorities, Counties, Cities, and whatever. The, the question, the, the question that's, that maybe is, is a better question, and I don't really know the answer about, I don't have any doubt, and Randy, you jump in anytime you want. I don't have any doubt, but that if the Airport Authority has excess property, or property that it's not using, like a terminal that's vacant, that the Airport Authority has the, has the, has the power, has the authority to rent that for a restaurant, or for whatever use they might, might make of it, okay? I think they have the power to do that. I, I think that, you know, the, the thing gets a little more difficult when we have problems with the, with the provisions of the lease, and if the electric bill's not being paid, there may be an argument to be made there that is that a, so it's a public purpose to lease that property, and to get some benefit for, for, to, to, to enter into that arrangement. The handling of the electric bill after the fact, and where we are now, you know, we kind of just, we kind of just got there, and, and away it went. The other thing that was out there, because I sat at all of these meetings, and then I'll shut up again. But the other thing that was out there is that when Barnstormers went to the Airport Authority and had this notion they wanted to put a restaurant in there. The airport basically said, "We don't have money to improve this building to make it good for that." So, the principals in Barnstormers indicated, "We'll make these improvements, and you won't have to pay for it, basically, and then we'll take that off of our rent." In much the way that, you know, it's not uncommon for people that live on a farm, to do that same kind of thing with a, with a farmhouse, that maybe is kind of on the edge, and, and isn't being done. They'll put money into the house to keep it livable, and, and then work it off in rent. And, and that's really the, the, the underlying understanding of relationship that was present there, and then as Mr. Mendelman says, there was a process where after the improvements were done, after, after the restaurant was in place, the Airport Authority and, and the Barnstormers folks memorialized how much credit had been realized, that, and the notion was that these things that they're going to give credit for are things like making improvements that are going to save the building, whether it's, or extend the useful life of the building, oh, rough, windows, those kinds of things, improved electrical service, or whatever, to be distinguished from things that they wouldn't have got the credit from. When, when Barnstormers put in hoods and restaurants, or restaurant utensils, and stoves, and, and built out the lease, those were leasehold tenant improvements that they were not given credit against as far as the prepaid rent. And that's the general way that that went, and then parties got together, the airport representatives of the Airport Authority got together, talked with, with the Barnstormers folks, and came up with the number that was reflected in that lease amendment, which, by the way, I didn't write that either.
I, the, the citizens have no record of how that was determined.
And I think that's an appropriate-
It almost appears to me that it was, you worked backwards into it, and whatever you were short, whatever you wanted, you started plugging in fees, and-
And, and that, Paul, I think that that would be an appropriate record, public records request to make of the, of the Airport Authority.
And this is just an opinion, and I will make those requests, and this is just an opinion of mine, but I believe that two city councilmen, Carl Reader, Dave Faust, in the year 2010 or '09, when this airport was conceived, I think they took that, the position that they had at the time of councilman, and the influence that that position carries, and took that with them out to negotiate a lease, and I, and I think they negotiated that under the auspices, or the guys, or, as a councilman. And I think that carried a little clot with it, and a little, if you read the lease, obviously, some pretty lenient terms, might have been afforded those two, maybe because they were councilmen, I don't know. But it just... disappointing, I think.
Mayor, if I- Well, I just think it's important that we address Paul's question about being treated in a professional manner, manner, going forward, without any repercussions. I know from staff's perspective, and I'm positive from the council's perspective, that that will not occur, there won't be repercussions because of Paul's questions here tonight. I just wanted to make sure and reassure him that that would be the case, because that isn't what the City of Norfolk's about. Also, I'd like to say that the mayor and, and I, at the Airport Authority meeting last Monday night, strongly urged the Airport Authority to, to take the actions and to, that they thought was appropriate, were appropriate, to be clear and articulate the, the game plan, if you will, for lack of better words, the plan going forward to remedy this situation out there. And to do that urgently, to, to use Paul's term, to do that urgently, or do that, do that very timely. It just seems to me that the longer this festers, the worse it gets, for the Airport Authority, for Barnstormers, and perhaps for this council, you know, as that, as we move forward, you know, the longer you take inaction to solve these kind of situations, the worse it gets for the public too, and their trust level for elected officials, the Airport Authority Board in particular. At the end of the day, the Airport Authority Board is an elected body. They have roles and responsibilities, including fiduciary roles and responsibilities, very similar to this mayor and council. So, it is my hope and prayer that they take actions that are appropriate to their, to that position, and to their positions as Airport Authority Board members in their elected capacities. So going forward, I, I guess I would recommend that we, maybe, Mayor, with your permission, or with your direction, we, we meet as a subcommittee and have some discussions on, on the request here that Paul, Paul raised, you know, within our own circle, and then, again, I would, I would encourage Paul to make those requests to the Airport Authority, that's the appropriate body to hear these, and to make the requests from, so I think that's good advice that Clint gave him, and it sounds like Mr. Mendelman's going to take that advice.
Can I say one more thing? I would encourage any staff, any city staff, anybody. There's other instances of abuse from Mr. Faust, and if there's, there's people out there, and if, I know of several more of abuse they've received, and if there is some, I wish they would come forward, and either through maybe the paper, or some medium, that would be appropriate to, to respond to that. And Terry Walker, that took a lot of courage for her when I asked her if I could say that in public and use her name. And whether Mr. Faust thinks that's true or not, I don't think Ms. Terry Walker lied to me, so.
Okay, Paul. You've given us an interesting hour, and I know too, it's not easy to come forward and stand in front of this, and all I-
Very easy, very easy to come forward when you have the truth on your side.
Well, and I appreciate that.
And when you're trying to-
I appreciate it.
When you're in a defensive position, a defensive mode, this is, that's what comes out, is arguments, intimidation. When you're in defensive mode, that's what happens. When you're in the right, I think you're calm and collected, and you, it just flows out of you. This is probably one of the meetings I've never got the little jitteries in my voice.
I, I appreciate that, Paul.
I think I have the truth on my side.
All right, all right. We still are, anyone else that wants to come speak to this group? No, Mark, you can't. We're adjourned.